Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 28th, 2017 Regular Meeting of the Guyman City Council. This time, I'd like to invite Wayne Dawson to come up to the podium and give our invocation, or his stand-in, as the case might be.
Thank you, sir. Father, we thank you. God, you are good, and you do great things. And Lord, we thank you for our city. We thank you, God, for our leaders, Lord, who try to make the best decisions for all of us. Lord, we pray that you give them wisdom and discernment and insight as they make decisions tonight. Father, we thank you for the state in which we live. And God, we pray for our state. We pray for our nation, Lord, for the many areas that are in distress right now. God, if we can help, be your hands and feet. Show us how. Lord, we pray for the best for our area. God, we pray that your grace, your love, Lord, would flow throughout this land, and that God, we would be good neighbors, Lord, we'd be good stewards of the land that you've given us, and that, Father, we would always look to you. Lord, bless this meeting tonight. May hearts be open, and minds and ears be open to hear what you would have us to say. Lord, guide us in this meeting, and bless those who lead us. We pray this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Livingston, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
Crone.
Here.
Alvedres.
Here.
Livinggood.
Here.
Hawkins.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Ms. Hawkins again's at Leadership Oklahoma this weekend. Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is public comments and announcements. Public comments and announcements. Agenda item number five is presentation of the proclamation declaring the month of October as Oklahoma State 4-H Month. I think we've got some 4-H youngsters here and leaders. If you all would like, why don't you come up and line up behind the podium up here. If you want to get over there so you can talk in the mic, one of you, you can introduce them to us if they'll line up so we can...
I'll have each one tell their name.
Okay.
I'm the leader, Renee Bagley.
I'm Guyman 4-H Club President Bryce Bagley.
Vice President Zachary Lee.
I'm Katie Richards.
I'm Treasurer Sarah Lindley.
And why?
I'm John Lindley.
I'm Secretary Zoe Lee.
I'm Recreation Leader Molly Baloo.
I'm Maggie Baloo.
I'm Kaylee Rhodes.
All right. Well, whereas 4-H has had its beginnings in rural America and now serves youth in urban, suburban, and rural communities, in Oklahoma, 4-H is open to youth between the ages of nine and 19. And whereas 4-H is a nationwide program led by state land-grant universities in cooperation with local county extension centers, and in Oklahoma, 4-H is the largest youth educational program aside from public schools, serving more than 200,000. And whereas each of the 4-Hs on the clover represent ways youth can grow, develop, and be responsible to their communities through 4-H, the first H stands for head, for critical thinking, decision-making, and service learning. The second H stands for heart, for self-discipline, empathy, and communication. The third H for hands, and serving others through late leadership and teamwork. And the fourth H is for health, and for a healthy lifestyle choice and safety. for Quality Communities, IQC. And whereas as part of the 4-H experience, 4-H members are part of the Oklahoma Revolution I'm supposed to dial a phone number here if I do this right. Hello? of Responsibility, and 4-H provides learning by doing through service project, as well It's ringing. While we're doing that, good evening, Mayor and Council. as utilizes a variety of community resources to enhance the educational experience of Back in June, we had IQC, the Institute for Quality Communities from Oklahoma University, members. And whereas the 4-H program relies heavily on volunteers, are involved in nearly every visit Guyman for a weekend. aspect of the program, and develop into community leaders. They went back, talked to us, talked to residents, went back, did a draft report. Now therefore, I, Kim Peterson, Mayor of Guyman, Oklahoma, and the City Council, do hereby We had a couple of comments. proclaim the month of October as Oklahoma State 4-H Month in Guyman, Oklahoma, and urge And now this is their final report that is the result of that weekend. the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of With us today is Shane Hampton. He is the Executive Director of the IQC. this special program that enhances our young people's interest in their futures as part He will take you through the report, and then we'll be able to have an interactive of the Texas County 4-H Youth Development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership aspect to this. If you have any questions, he will be able to answer them. Shane, are you there? between our county and our state university system.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Can you hear? Okay.
Okay. And can we share my screen, or do I need to do something there, Jim?
If you click on Share at the top of your browser, that should present your video.
Okay. Okay. Here we go. Okay. So now, can you guys see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you guys for having me today. Sorry I couldn't make it all the way to Guyman. I'm here at our downtown studio in Oklahoma City for the College of Architecture. So, we had a great time first. Just wanted to say we had a great time visiting Guyman earlier this summer, and I just wanted to thank Kayla McCarter from the TSET program there in the Health Department for welcoming us to Guyman, and Mayor Peterson for showing us around, and Doug and Dave for also helping out, being our tour guides for the trip. I wanted to just kind of walk through the final document that we produced as part of this project. We were in Guyman for about 48 hours altogether, so it was a very quick trip. We learned a lot about the community in that short time, talked with a lot of people, and really got to see quite a bit of the town while we were there. Then we went back to our office and worked for a couple more weeks, kind of compiling all of the things that we heard from people in the community into something that we thought would help communicate some of the ideas and hopefully help you guys implement some of the goals that were in your comprehensive plan as well. So if I could just kind of flip through this document and tell you what's in here, there's a quick summary of everything, sort of the process that we went through. One of the things, since we were invited to Guyman by the TSET program, which focuses on public health in Oklahoma, and especially recently focusing on how active transportation can have an impact on the health of a community, we wanted to include some extra resources for you guys to look at on that topic. In the past, we have a conference every other year at the University of Oklahoma that we host, where we bring in experts on designing communities for public health, or for economic benefit, or maybe for fiscal solvency of the city. How can we design our cities better so that they can break even on the budget line in the end? But we have had several speakers speak specifically about health, and I would recommend Dr. Richard Jackson, who came to visit us from UCLA, and Dr. Karen Lee as well. Those are both speakers that came to us, and their videos are available on our placemaking conference website. So if you want some additional background on sort of the contribution of the types of towns we live in and how that impacts our health, those are both great talks. I have some images and sort of memories from how we got to experience Guyman. So Mayor Peterson took us around in one of the great buses, and we really got to see a lot of the economic generators, and how sort of expansive the city of Guyman is from east to west side, and how many resources are available there. Another thing that struck us was the number of good recreational facilities that are in Guyman as well, sort of parks and facilities that are spread out among the neighborhoods. We met with a great group of people from different organizations that are involved with Main Street and downtown Guyman, and even got to tour inside of the American Theater and the Dale Hotel, for both really interesting projects to check out. We got to see the types of streets that are in Guyman. You have some very wide streets, which present some opportunities that we'll talk about later on as well. Some of the assets, like I started mentioning, we felt the downtown was very vibrant already. We don't often go into very many communities where almost every storefront has a business in it. So a lot of times when we go to a community, they're wondering how to get the businesses into the storefronts, and that's something that you guys really already have, a pretty strong population of businesses. I mentioned the parks as well. People throughout our visit wanted us to know, you know, Guyman residents that we were speaking with really wanted us to know that they're proud of Guyman's network of parks, and that they think they're great spaces, but it felt like they were disconnected from each other, and that it was difficult maybe to walk from one park to the next, or to bike from a home to a park rather than getting in the car. We had a meeting in the library, and one of our team members snapped the photos of the bulletin boards in the library, all the events that were going on. So that's another sign that we see that, you know, Guyman is ready to have a very active public life. And from an urban design perspective, one of the things that's really good for walkability is the really consistent grid of streets that Guyman has because it's a pretty historic town, and so most of the streets in town have these streets and alleys that are actually really good advantage for creating a walkable city. We were able to have two different, or actually, three different meetings with the communities. So we got to meet with a big group in the Galleon and talk about people's ideas about Guyman. And we also got to meet in the library, as I mentioned, and kind of do a hands-on workshop that I'll talk about in a bit. We asked people things like, why would they walk around town, or why do they choose to walk if they do? Maybe what prevents them from walking if they don't tend to walk around downtown? And maybe also ask them how they might improve things. So a lot of the ideas in this report are really just bundled ideas that we put into a nice package that were from people that live in Guyman. One of the meetings, as I said, was kind of more of a hands-on thing. We kind of played in your streets, so I hope that's okay with you guys. This was up on, I want to say this was 19th Street, right at the entrance to the high school on the south side there, on the south entrance to the high school. And this street, we measured at about 50 feet wide from curb to curb. And when we asked people how many lanes it was, they said it was two lanes. And for us, a 50-foot-wide street would have up to five lanes on it. So we thought, you know, is there a way to kind of work with the street in inexpensive materials to help make a difference on the crosswalks here so that people can easily walk around the neighborhood? And this was just a site that we picked nearby the school that we could kind of test out an idea on. I'll talk a little bit about what this completed project could look like as well. Moving on to some of the key recommendations that we had related to walkability, the first thing is that, you know, Guyman already has a pretty walkable downtown area, and so that's definitely the heart of creating a walkable community in Guyman. So the first thing we want is to be able to get people down there. So you have several great highways downtown that are having many vehicles pass by every day, but maybe some of them pass by without even knowing there's a great, healthy downtown that they could stop and visit. So we talked a little bit about first getting people directed to downtown from those highway gateways. There were some various ideas about that. And we also looked at the new streetscape there on the south end of Main Street that's been done. We thought that was a great example of the type of treatment that can be done near those highways to kind of upgrade the street and kind of signal to people that are passing by the highway that there's a gateway to a special place that they could check out. You know, downtown, like I said, is a pretty walkable place. We do like the brick streets. I know that's a challenging maintenance issue, but it does create sort of a sense of place for downtown, and kind of can also slow down traffic sometimes. We noticed the great ghost signs on some of the buildings, and included some resources to, on the preservation of ghost signage, which is the faded historic signs that often are remaining on historic buildings. We talked about the covered walkways that you have, which is a pretty unique feature for Guyman as well, and we really liked it with, you know, providing a little bit of shade on certain parts of the sidewalk as well. And also talked about this concept of sidewalk amenity zones. We already saw some examples of people using the sidewalks for more than just walking. It can be used for adding potted plants, and sandwich boards, and patio seating. So as long as there's a clear path that's kind of accessible for people to move through, the rest of that sidewalk, which is already a nice 12-foot width, can be used for lots of other things to enhance downtown. So once we have gotten people into downtown, it's a pretty walkable place. Another idea we talked about was wayfinding to the rest of the locations in the community that might be of interest to people who are walking, or biking, or jogging. We talked about these very temporary wayfinding systems that we've seen. This is a picture of two of our students in Oklahoma City showing a signage system that they made out of political yard signs. So it's a very simple sort of thing. We just mocked up some examples of, what if you could tell people it's only a five-minute bike to Sunset Lake from downtown? Would that make them more likely to possibly try out that bike ride or that jog? Another one we saw was in another neighborhood here in Norman, that they use chalk to do wayfinding to different businesses in their main street. Wayfinding could also be in a more permanent format, maybe a small kiosk. This was a quick photo rendering our team did to show an example of a wayfinding kiosk with a map of Guyman, all the high points, and maybe the safe routes for biking and walking designated on that map. Also, there's already an existing map of the cultural district downtown that could be included to kind of show a focus on downtown. And, you know, not every street can, you know, be upgraded. It's just not feasible to have, you know, bike lanes and sidewalks on every single street right away. So we talked a little bit about finding those priority streets for our pilot projects that we want to just try out first. And on this map, the bold lines are the recommended streets that were in the comprehensive plan for biking and walking priority streets. We also added the James Street because it connects several schools in the community, and it's kind of a low-traffic street that's already pretty good for walking and biking. And maybe with just a little bit of traffic calming measures, it could be really strong streets for people, to inspire people to walk and bike to destinations in town. We included, when we say pilot project for traffic calming, this is a slide showing just a small segment of possible traffic calming measures. Basic rules of traffic calming are a bit of a narrower appearance to the street, can really have a psychological effect on drivers to get them to slow down. So we're not really talking about just adding a new street sign, but maybe narrowing up the street, tightening up some of the corners, lots of different concepts that have been used. We kind of mocked that up a little bit by creating this curb extension during the community meeting. So we shortened the crossing distance on this street from crossing 50 feet of asphalt. If we could implement a curb extension on that crosswalk, we could shorten the crossing distance down to about 20 feet. Just kind of provides a little bit more certainty where the car's going to pass through this wide intersection, and hopefully has a calming effect on people that are driving through past the school. These are some images of the temporary sort of improvement measures that we've seen in many other cities. So these kinds of things can be tested out. You don't have to do a million-dollar commitment and totally rebuild the street in order to try something that may or may not work. So what I love about these is it's just a quick experiment. You can drive a fire truck through it, see if it fits through, drive someone's farm truck through, and make sure that they can make the corners. And kind of, if it doesn't work, you can always make an adjustment, change the paint or chalk colors, and move on. This is an example of a city in Texas that implemented curb extensions using paint, just these polka dot stencils that they thought were fun, and then their regular paint striping machine to do the outlines of the curb extension, just narrowing down that intersection. This is what their completed projects look like. And since we didn't want to just show you just pictures of other cities, we also wanted to kind of mock up what this might look like at real intersections at Guyman. So this was an intersection of two very wide streets near the high school, 21st and James. On both of these streets, it was 50 feet of asphalt. And so this is just a, you know, paint and reflective flexible post crosswalk that we mocked up, just narrowing that down to two-lane width. Another example, you can also choke down the width of a street at a mid-block section. The intersections are far apart. So this is an example of a mid-block crosswalk also near the high school. These kinds of interventions work really well if there's some on-street parking needs in the area, so you can still preserve people being able to park on the curb here, but then at certain points, there might be an extension of the sidewalk so that the crossing distance is shorter. Last one, and I've only seen this in one neighborhood in Oklahoma before, and it was in Norman, is kind of a circle just dropped into the middle of the street. And these are pretty common in the west coast cities and their residential neighborhoods as a way to slow down traffic as it comes through intersections. So those were some ideas for, you know, how cities are sort of trying out ideas without putting in too much commitment. A lot of times, this is led by citizen groups, or people who really want to try something out in their neighborhood. So we put in some suggestions on next steps for people who care about changing streets to be a little bit more accommodating for bikes and pedestrians, to maybe identify a team that cares about this from community members and city staff and Health Department staff as well. We met the great group that is kind of an interest group for running in Guyman, which was a great place to look for volunteers as well. If it's near a school, a lot of times people use schoolteachers or art classes to help out with some of these installations. You can do quick tests, just like we did with the cones on 19th Street there, and kind of set up something to try out before you identify which pilot projects you want to go forward with, and maybe use paint or chalk, depending on how permanent you want it to be. There's also, there's a guide that I'll include in this report that shows all the materials, whether you want it to last just a day, or a week, or maybe three months or more. You can use different materials to install these projects. Spend some time observing the effect of them. Did they really slow down traffic? Are they still moving traffic effectively as they need to down the street, et cetera? And you can make any adjustments that you might need. Just, you can see many people in Guyman involved in the project, and these are those resources that I mentioned that would be helpful to anyone trying to implement some of these concepts. I did, before I turn it over to you all for questions, I did want to give you one more resource as an example. The city of Fayetteville, Arkansas is one community that I've been watching lately. They've actually created a formal permitting process and application for community groups to do these types of projects in their neighborhood. So as you can see, it's a pretty formal application process. The city's engineering and public works staff gets to weigh in on the projects and make sure that they're certified for safety. And so I just think this is a really good example to look to if you're interested in starting to try to implement some of these projects. So that is about all I have, and with that, I'll try to answer any questions you all may have.
That was pretty thorough, Shane. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Shane. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, appreciate it. Sorry I couldn't be there.
Did you have any questions of us, city staff, about the report or any of the findings?
I'd like to study it a little bit more and then get back with you.
Well, one thing I would suggest, one way to move forward, might be that your comprehensive plan talks about getting a healthy living action plan. It talks about getting an advisory board together to do that, and I think that is into works. I think we've had some people step forward that are ready to do that. And what I would suggest is perhaps the best way to do this is to pass that on to them. We can take them through this. Give them 30 or 60 days to chew on it, to prioritize, to think where might be the best place, what ideas they can give back to you from people who live in these neighborhoods that we might want to try this. So I would suggest passing it on to them, and having us come back to you in 60 days after we meet with this group that we're forming. And I think that might be a good way to move forward. One comment I'll make was the night that they did the deal by the high school. Sergio and I were up there, and it was, you know, when they started this, it was kind of like, what are we doing? And as you progressed through marking it out, you saw the traffic coming down that street was slowing down.
They would slow down.
And we may want to recreate that sometime to just let everybody see what happens. I think there's a lot of material to think on and study on. Yeah, as Shane said, there's a lot of things we can do inexpensively, quickly, as an experiment, and then we can see what happens. This advisory board can monitor it, come back to you, and I think that's a really good way to move forward.
And I also think that this is a good resource for the discussions we're having with TSET grants and so forth.
Absolutely.
So you can use this as a template.
Any other comments? And what I would suggest is perhaps the best way to do this is to pass that on to them. We can take them through this. Give them 30 or 60 days to chew on it, to prioritize, to think where might be the best place, what, what, what ideas they can give back to you from people who live in these neighborhoods that we might want to try this. So I would suggest passing it on to them and having us come back to you in 60 days after we meet with this group that we're forming. And I think, I think that might be a good way to move forward.
One comment I'll make was the night that they did the deal by the high school. Sergio and I were up there, and it was, it was, you know, when they started this, it was kind of like, what are we doing? And as you progressed through marking it out, you saw the traffic coming down that street was slowing down.
They would slow down.
And we may want to recreate that sometime to just let everybody see what happens. I think there's a lot of, a lot of material to think on and study on.
Yeah, as Shane said, there's a lot of things we can do inexpensively, quickly, as an experiment, and then we can see what happens. This advisory board can monitor it, come back to you, and I think that's a really good way to move forward.
And I also think that this is a good resource for the discussions we're having with TSET grants and so forth.
Absolutely.
So you can, you can use this as a template.
Any other, any other comments? Have a motion to accept the report?
I'll make a motion that we accept the report from IQC.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
60 days?
Thank you.
60 days, David?
68.
Agenda item number seven is administration of the oath of office to firefighter Alan Williams. And Chief, if you and your group will come up, we'll... You raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Alan Williams.
I, Alan Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
By the ever-living God.
By the ever-living God.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oklahoma.
And of the state of Oklahoma.
The statutes and codes.
The statutes and codes.
Of the city of Guyman.
Of the city of Guyman.
The policies and rules.
The policies and rules.
Of the gift of the city of Guyman.
Of the city of Guyman.
And the Guyman Fire Department.
And the Guyman Fire Department.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of intern firefighter.
The duties of intern firefighter.
For the city of Guyman, Oklahoma.
For the city of Guyman, Oklahoma.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I think you got a pen or something, probably. Technical Rescue Team. Chief McSpec, that.
So with that, we'll, I'll direct your attention over here. We'll show just a short, three-minute little, it's just different pictures that we had when we responded to Hurricane, and I'll have my other two guys come up as we're watching this video, and you can go ahead and start it. So these are all the members of Oklahoma Task Force One that went with us. There were members from Tulsa, Oklahoma City, Calera Fire Rescue, members of the, all over the state of Oklahoma. There were Oklahoma game wardens, Oklahoma game wardens, fire departments, OHP, sheriff's offices. There were people from all over the state of Oklahoma there. We sent six guys down. We sent five paid guys and one volunteer with David Garrison. We, all, all of us, all the people that went were asked if they wanted to go. It's actually a fight to see who wanted to go and who didn't want to go. And then when we got there, we, the first night we got there, we didn't do a whole lot. We staged in San Antonio, then we went to Bryan, Texas and staged for about an hour, and then they shipped us out. Once we got there, we got deployed to a couple of rescue calls, nothing big the first day. So we were all a little frustrated. We traveled all night and got to do nothing. We didn't travel that far to sit there, and by day two, we were in the boats the entire time. The first day, Oklahoma Task Force One rescued 534 victims out of the waters. This is actually our team going in. We did get all spread out amongst different teams. This was where we slept for about six days. This was our camp. People in Houston were highly glad we were there. They were very nice to us. The Tulsa firefighters were really good to us. They, they enjoyed us and thought we were well-trained and very well-received, and all over the state of Oklahoma, they were impressed by our team and how well they all handled themselves. So made, made Guyman, put Guyman on the map and really did well. So just, every team had to have two rescue swimmers, which is what we did. They also had to have security forces. If you remember Katrina, there were people trying to steal boats. They were trying to steal rescue boats. They were trying to hurt first responders, so every team had a security, armed security with them at all times. We also had a boat operator and a truck operator because we didn't want our trucks to get stolen while we were out in the boats either. So here you'll see a bunch of cars that were flooded on the left picture. It's hard to see, but that's actually the trunk of a car that's open, so you're in four or five foot of water right there. The picture on the right-hand side, that's an overpass, so that's 14 or 15 foot of water there. The crazy thing for, for us, or at least for myself, is 80% of the city of Houston was fine. They were playing soccer, business as usual, traveling, doing whatever they needed to do, and then you'd make a turn on a side street and you'd be in four foot of water almost instantly. So in addition to that, FEMA is huge into saving animals as well. Animals are part of people's lives, so the first day, we saved 75 pets. One of the, kind of the unique things that I ran on was we went and got two ladies off the shore and took them into the, get eight cats that were rescue cats. Well, whoever rescued the cats were on the first floor. They kicked in somebody's door on the third floor of their apartment complex, kicked in their door, threw the cats in and shut the door. They didn't know who, who lived there. They were just trying to save the cats. So we went and got eight cats out of the water, and that was, that was one of my funny stories. I got a couple, but I won't share them with everybody. But with that, I'm going to let these two guys tell you a little bit about it, and if y'all have any questions, we'd be free, we'd be happy to ask, so.
Well, really, I would just like to thank city council, the people of Guyman, as well as our family and friends, because we had a lot of prayers and a lot of support that were directed our way. And again, thanks city council for allowing us to have this team and go down there and do what we do. So I appreciate that.
So as, as Captain Garrison said, I do want to express my gratitude to the council, everybody in the city of Guyman. We did, we did feel the love. I believe the video that Carson Kane shared of us leaving, deploying out, I think the first night, it was shared about 1,200 times on Facebook. So I mean, that, that really was, was an extra hand on our backs helping us there. So thank y'all very much.
So, any questions?
You put that training to good use, didn't you?
We did. We did. We didn't think we'd ever use it, and David, David's been on the department for 20...
26 years.
26 years. He, this is a once-in-a-career thing. He, the highlight of his career. He's seen a lot of fire in his life.
One, a comment I'd like to add, about a week after these gentlemen got back, my phone rang one afternoon, and I forgot to write his, put his name in my contact list, but it's Texas State Senator Hughes from Paris, Texas. And he called me, said, Mary, he said, I want to tell you, he said, I'm from Paris, Texas, in my part of the world, everybody's got a boat. So we loaded up boats and headed down there, and we called ahead to find out where we needed to be so we weren't just freelancing. And he said, they interred us with the Oklahoma camp. And he said, we work with a lot of your guys from Guyman. He said, especially RJ Vaughn. I, they really liked RJ. And he was very complimentary, and I told him, I said, well, you know, I said, maybe next time we come, we're going to have a boat for him. And, and because the guys didn't have a boat, so they had to travel, share work with other ones. But there is a Gary Holloman from Methodist Church, it's a conspiracy unit, that there's a drive to raise 6,500 bucks to buy him a boat, so that we, when we go next time, we'll have our own boat. But I want to thank you, gentlemen.
And we kind of laugh about it, but again, you talk about the flood we had three years ago. If there would have been something, somebody out there, I still don't know what we would have done. I mean, we've got a raft now, but I don't know if I feel comfortable stretching ropes half a mile to get a boat out to the middle to get somebody out, but we'll, we'd figure something out. We'd get there one way or the other. So, any other questions? One of the big things that I, I tend to get asked about is, you know, what did it cost the city? Of course, we don't have all those in yet, but FEMA will reimburse us 100% for travel, pay us for the vehicles that were down there for our personnel, so it, it won't cost the city, city anything in the end. In fact, the city will probably make some money, but it's just a matter of when we get it. I know the sooner we get it, the better, but it's FEMA. You know, they're, they're behind Irma, Harvey, and now whatever, Maria, that was the other one, right, that hit Puerto Rico? So they're, they're a little stretched thin, but hopefully we get it quick, so. We'll praise you, gentlemen. You gentlemen put your lives in danger for sake of others, so thank you very much. Well, thank you. It was a great opportunity. We appreciate it.
Thanks for a safe trip.
Yeah.
Three blown-out tires on the way home.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number 822, an ordinance requiring registration and regulating sale of personal property and residential property locations, garage sales, yard sales, or similar designated sales, providing perseverance and declaring an emergency. Mr. Platsen.
Every so often, I think we all get complaints about garage sales. There's too many. They're having too many. They're running a commercial business out of the house, traffic going through the neighborhood. So in response to that, we have come up with an ordinance to try to just get a little bit of a handle on that. And what this ordinance proposes is, is that one, garage sales register with us. They don't have to pay anything. There's no permit. There's no fee to pay. They call us, it's going to be this weekend, here's the address, here's the dates, here's the responsible person. They can do that by phone, they can come into the office, any way they want to do that is fine with us. We limit to four per year, with at least four calendar days separating each one authorized merchandise, duration is 72 consecutive hours for a weekend, and penalty as well. So just, just briefly, it's, it's getting a handle on these, limiting the number they can have, making sure that we don't have a commercial business running out of a house, that we limit, cut through traffic through neighborhoods, and also all the signs that are put up for garage sales, you cannot put an off-site sign as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If you don't, we would respectfully ask for your approval.
Any comments?
Who do they contact here at the city?
Anybody in our office, Marissa, Larry, myself, anybody in community development or planning.
Anybody in community development.
They would call the call center. The call center will know to put it through to one of us. We will take their information. It'll be as simple as that.
Anybody in community development?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Have we set a fine limit?
I'm sorry?
You've got a person violating this ordinance shall be subject to fines provided in Section 1-108 of this code.
You know, we would have to go a long way down the road before we actually find somebody for a garage sale. We just do not implement an ordinance like that. We're going to try to talk to them once, twice, three times. We would write them a ticket to have them do 10 days, call us to make sure it doesn't happen again. So before we ever got to that, we would go through several steps, both verbally and in writing, and writing a ticket before we actually assess a fine.
Yeah, I think the fine would come from code enforcement, not necessarily from the planning department. So if they, they had their four sales and then they continued to do them, then it would be a code enforcement violation. We would send them the notice and proceed that in that direction or that fashion.
Yep. They would get a letter, then they would get a 10-day letter, get a ticket, and then if it got to that point, then we would try to assess a fine.
How do you propose to control the signs? People are used to putting them, you know, all over the place, not just in their yard where the actual...
Just the way we're implementing the sign ordinance that we just passed today.
RFQ to provide consulting services on streetscape design, item 11. Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12 is discussion and possible action on budget amendment number two for the Guyman Development Fund in the amount of $300. And this is an beautify Oklahoma grant.
I make a motion that we accept budget amendment number two, item 12.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action on budget amendment number three for the general fund in the amount of $44,230.
This, this was the item that was tabled from the last council meeting. Budget amendment transfers money into street maintenance and about $44,000 into the street maintenance fund.
In discussion, have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve budget amendment number three for general fund, item 13.
A second.
Have a motion in a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is reports and comments from city manager and council members.
Yes, I have some dates to put on your calendar. I've mentioned one already, and that's the October 26 budget workshop. Crawford Associates will be here. We'd like to have that workshop at 5:00. Our intention on the first meeting is to talk about revenues and start looking at projections for the balance of this year and the budget cycle coming up in 2018. The next one is October 12th, our next council meeting. We had scheduled a field trip to the wastewater treatment plant, and we'd like to have that start at 4:00 PM. We think the field trip may take an hour or so and then, and then give you time to get back here for the council meeting. They've made some improvements out there, and they'd like to kind of walk through those improvements and talk to you a little about, about the operation of the plant and maybe talk a little bit about our budget for next year for the treatment plant, so. And then finally, October 9th, Lieutenant Governor Todd Lamb will be here for a leadership workshop. We are hosting it at the public library, and I think it starts 9:00 AM, something like that, I believe. And then the final, final note for this evening, I handed out a flyer, notebook, Smart Solutions from ICMA. Guyman is featured as one of the cities in that notebook, and it talks about the call center and the technology that was implemented. And Don, if you have any comments you'd like to make about that program and where we are?
Thank you, Larry. As you know, the International City Management Association is a member of our Board of Directors for IBTS, and IBTS did fund the study in cooperation with ICMA to bring about and identify some of the best practices being performed nationwide in cities. What you heard tonight with the IMS presentation is part of that type of program, the call center, being able to track work orders, being able to do analytics on those track work orders to tell, determine what you're using in terms of labor and equipment. work orders to tell, determine what you're using in terms of labor and equipment and materials so that you can make better decisions and, and your budgeting and, and your city services can improve. But we were, we were happy to, to fund that study and participate and, and be part of putting it together. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Anybody have anything? I attended the last council. I was gone. I attended OML in Tulsa. Had a lot of visits. One of the primary, some of the primary visits I had was with Severn, Trent, and Cardinal Engineering to kind of start the discussion of working on our water reuse for the golf course in the, in the lake area again. This with a lot of vendors about electronic metering and playground equipment and splash pads and, and a lot of other good things. And I think that OML's going to go in a totally new direction with the new leaders. So it's going to, that's one of the largest conventions they've had in 103-year years. And I think it's going to be, OML's going to start a program that they have field representatives for each district of the state. If we have problems, they'll come out and talk to us. They'll come out and give programs. They're going to be more of a resource that, that comes out and is face-to-face rather than call us and we'll talk to you on the telephone. So it's kind of a new direction. That's all I've got. Anybody have anything else? Any new business? Not will stand adjourned. We'll reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. We've done agenda item number one and two. Is there any public comments and announcements?
Mayor?
Yes?
The gentleman out here would like to speak to the council about a street.
Okay. This is your chance, Dr.
I'm sorry. I'll get closer to the microphone.
Might have to have another mill levy on you. To the councils, the city commissioners. I bought a square block out here a few years ago, and Solomon's mayor. He was on the council, I think, then.
Probably.
He's the only one, I think. David Petty was here. Anyway, this, here's a survey of it. And give you a little history on it. This was Main Street right there, 80-foot Main Street. And this is 60-foot Main Street now. Main Street's coming right down on the west side. I owned that, that part of these lots here. Well, I traded that 80-foot right here for the 60-foot for the city. And these two lots right here belonged to the city. David done the legal work on it, and it's recorded in the courthouse. But anyway, since that's happened, I've sold this 200 by 200 right in here to the Wall and Ballin people. And they built, I built them a church in there, 4,000 square foot church. And the only way they got to get into that church is through this easement I gave them on this coming off of that A Street. Well, this Ninth Street's dirt road, and so is this Main Street coming on that. That's dirt road. They're out here at the, going around to the jail. That's all dirt. I'd like a proposal to curb and gutter this right here from Main to Ninth, anyway. And then, then pave and gutter Ninth Street also. So that mill levy I'm talking about, just add a couple more mill levies to that, and we get that done. But the last time I was in there, a few months ago, I went to church there with them. They had 400 people in that building, 400. There's 120 cars out here. And these are my lots out here, too, in where I've got my office and my shop. And they've parked cars everywhere. And I built this, I put gravel over here on this side of the fence for them. They parked their cars there. I put gravel here. So they park cars here. But to get in there, they got to go down this dirt road to get into this parking lot here. So that needs to be paved here so they can get into their church and also have parking out here. That's why you leave this survey. I'll give it to you.
Well, why don't you hang on to it? You'll need to get with, with our city manager and, and our, those folks.
We've spoken, yeah. Yeah. He's, he's asking for a funding commitment, I believe.
Well, it's public comments, so we can't do that tonight. So anyway, we're aware of it. Thank you.
I know you're broke, but there's a way to get money. You can always go to the bank, get mine. So you guys have the program now, guys.
Well, thanks for coming in and bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, fellas.
You bet.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on determining the order of priority of two sewer capital projects funded by the balance of a 2015A revenue bond for a forced main and lift station in the southeast Guyman or the possible casino water and sewer lines preliminary work.
Mayor, you have a, you have a packet. This item was tabled from the last council meeting, and I asked our engineer to go back and reduce the scope of the project. Originally, we were proposing a sewer line project of about $1.5 million. And we discovered that the balance of the funds in the 2015 revenue bond issue is only about $800,000, $850,000. So I asked him to reduce that scope. And you can see a project map and a description of the project that we're proposing. And it isn't probably our highest priority, but we believe, given the time constraints imposed by the revenue bond issue, we need to proceed with a sewer line project. And we think this is the most viable one without having to go through some additional engineering and running the risk of running out of time, so to speak, on, on issuing the, the project.
And this, this will service possible additional housing on the east side of town?
Yes, it will.
East side.
Yes. And you can see that the proposal includes a sewer line, a manhole, and a forced main, along with a lift station to provide that service on a hurlaman. And it, and it shows you in the map that's attached, the location of the lift station and the eight-inch forced main that would tie into our system at the highway.
Is there any, any questions, comments, discussion?
Does this pretty well take care of that bar?
Yes, it does. Completes, completes the funds that we have available.
So on this motion, you want to determine the order of priority?
We're recommending this project versus the casino project, yes. Or Highway 54 project. I probably shouldn't say casino, but the idea was to extend service on Highway 54 to encourage additional development. And obviously, we don't have the funds to, to do that project.
I'm going to make a motion that we go with staff recommendation and use the balance of the 2015A revenue bond for the forced main and lift station southeast Guyman, item four.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Cron?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five eyes.
Is there any new business? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank everybody for coming.